We've got your concealer, it's mood issue now. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call the meeting of council here now to order. The chair will give the invocation. And Councilman Jenkins will lead us in the pledge allegiance. We please stand.
Oh gracious God, as we come to you today with thankful hearts as we've become in the Thanksgiving season, God, I pray today for those citizens there in Texas that tragedy. We pray oh God that you will protect our city, bless our city, and Lord, we pray for mercy and compassion as we begin the business of the city today in Christ's name.
If you'll join me facing the flag, join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united out, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, we please call the robe.
Councilman Breffler, Councilman Everson, Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Councilman Corlin.
Present.
Councilman O'Corrigan.
Present.
Councilman Corbin Lee, and Councilman Dawkins.
Tomorrow, with great anticipation and excitement, I will seek a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. You will get one. Thank you. This time, I was hoping that Councilman Everson would enter the chambers, but since he is not, I will take the opportunity to introduce Mr. Dave Smith of BRF EAP to give us a brief presentation. I believe he has some others members of his party with him, and we welcome you, Dave, to the council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, City Council, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to come here today and give you a brief update on the Entrepreneurial Acceleration Program and where we are today. I'll give you the highlights, and then you want to hear from your constituents, so I've asked two of the entrepreneurs that we're working with to come up, and they'll come up and tell you their story. This is your, what you're going to see is the cumulative results for EAP for the first four years, and they're on my right, right here. We've actually vetted or talked to 471 different companies during this time period. Of that, 40 of them have received investment grants or become bankable. That has generated 103 new jobs in Shreveport and Caddo Parish. This does not include the aquarium. The aquarium opened after our closing date on this report, but I would tell you right now, there are 15 full-time positions in the aquarium and 39 part-time positions in the aquarium. Now, that mix is going to change a little bit as we flush out the business model and where we're seeing a lot of growth. I'll tell you, there's been a lot, if you haven't been down there, I recommend you go down there. I'll tell you, on the weekends, there's lines going both ways down the street. So, we're having a lot of success there. The total annual payroll based upon these investments is $5.6 million. Total investment in all the companies is $53.9 million. That's $53 million of investment into Shreveport and Caddo in these companies. A lot of that is syndicated across the country. You know, a lot of people used to think you had to go to the East Coast or West Coast to get investment. That's really not true. You can get investment in middle America and launch your company here. Now, the industry breakdown on my left, you can see that about 12% are in the consumer goods and services, 1% in finance technology. We have one fintech company here in Shreveport. Healthcare stayed a little flat, about 17%. If you look at, you know, the amount of healthcare that we have here, the more research that's done, that we can commercialize, the better off we are. I would think for a community our size with a research hospital, we would see a lot of growth in that area, but we haven't. Media and entertainment, down a little bit, 6% of everything that we've seen is in entertainment. Technology, both on the IT side and software development, about 23%, holding steady. And a lot of people have asked me, where have I seen the most job opportunity? Right now, software development, technology development is a big one there. Oil and gas with all of our others, our food service, everything, about 41% of what we've seen, holding pretty steady. A lot of you came out, and I appreciate you coming out, to the wall ceremony where we recognized a lot of the startups. What you saw was checked, a cloud security company, Cotton Street Farm, hydroponics farming being done right here in downtown Shreveport. So, that one's going to start pretty soon. Gorilla Tree Films produced three films right here, three short films. Pet Education Systems, Looney Solar, a creative entertainment system for children. Segway Science Lab, you have a fully functioning biomedical lab in Shreveport. Of course, Planet Aqua Group with the aquarium. Red River Range, a state-of-the-art indoor range right here in Shreveport. G-Rock Climbing, another family entertainment activity. And P.A. Productions, and she's going to come up, I'll introduce her in a second, and Crazy Horse Coal, a change in the way that coal is mining. Coal mine technology being developed right here in Shreveport and Caddo Parish. You know, we gold ourselves, if you look at our statistics, when we did this four years ago based upon the master plan, we gold ourselves based upon other cities of our size and pretty much across the South, but look how far we're outpacing our peers in our production here. There is no shortage of great ideas right now in Shreveport and Bossier. Let me introduce the first entrepreneur to you and give her an opportunity to tell you about her, what she's doing, but that's Priscilla Adams. She's the CEO of P.A. Productions, okay? Priscilla?
Thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm very pleased to be here today to talk to you about myself and my company and the support that we're getting from EAP. Again, my name is Priscilla Adams, and my company is P.A. Productions, which is a film production company. And we focus on making short and feature films that not only bring entertainment to the community, but focus on major issues such as HIV and AIDS, domestic violence, breast cancer, and things like that. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I am a Shreveport native, born and raised right here in Shreveport. When I was 17, about a week or two after high school, I joined the United States Navy and left Shreveport. So, I had a chance to visit other cities, visit other countries, and kind of see how they do things there. And about maybe three or four years ago, I relocated back to Shreveport. At that time, the film industry was still moving and generating films and dollars in the economy here, and I thought it would be a really good move for me, not to mention my mother had been begging me to move back home since I left. So, I came back to Shreveport and was hoping to really move forward with my production company, because at this point, I'd already produced several films and wanted to really kind of move forward into an area where bigger films were being produced. But at that time, things kind of sort of took a turn, and some of the production companies started leaving Shreveport. So, it made it hard for me to really be able to move forward with my company, and to tell you the truth, I was on the way out the door until someone told me about the EAP program. A friend of mine, a relative actually, who's familiar with the work that Dave has been doing with that program, happened to talk to me right in the nick of time and told me about the program. And then I started researching it and went down and talked to Dave and his team and met with them, and I've got to tell you, it's definitely been very productive for me. They've been able to help me with some of the areas of my business that I didn't have expertise in. I know how to write, I know how to produce, I know how to make films, but I didn't have a really strong education in business. So, they've been able to help me with my business plan, my pitch deck, my financial plan, the structure of actually setting up the other businesses that will be investing in the future film projects that I do. So, they've been very resourceful, very helpful, and I definitely think it's a program that a lot of people could benefit from that are in my position. So, I appreciate your support for the program, and I hope that you continue to support it. And pretty soon, I expect to be able to invite you all to film opening red carpet somewhere here in Shreveport. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Priscilla. Next, I want to introduce another hometown gentleman, experienced entrepreneur, experienced executive, and he left as well, but he came up with another opportunity in the entertainment network space. He came home and he wants to launch his next venture here in Shreveport, Marcus Morton.
Councilman. Madam Mayor, thank you very much for having me here. Some of you here know me, some of you don't, but like Dave said, I'm born and raised in Shreveport. I went to school here, I went to Captain Shreve, and I was lucky enough to participate in the split program between Captain Shreve and the Computer Science Program at the time that was held at Booker T. Washington for my 11th grade and 12th grade. And had it not been for that program, much like the EAP program, I wouldn't be in this business or in any of the other startups in the computer science world that I found myself in throughout my career. This is now my third technology startup. My very first one, we started with the help of some people from Louisiana Tech and ended up selling that company to EarthLink a long time ago. Did very well with that company. This company, Astere Networks, which I was lucky enough to partner with Steve Gray, who's here with me, is one of the biggest game executives in the world and online executives in the world. He is from another state altogether and grew up mostly out of the country, but worked at Tencent for the last eight and a half years or so. And if any of you aren't familiar with Tencent, they're one of the biggest companies in all of Asia, the biggest tech company in China as a matter of fact. And so, we've been very, very happy to find him and partner with him and then to be able to get him to be willing to locate our new venture here in Shreveport. We were able to do that with the help of the EAP. It's a bit of a stretch in a lot of ways to move that far advanced into where Shreveport is, and I know that because my second tech company I started here too. So, we've gone a long, long ways, and the EAP has been a very big, very big help to us in showing us that the personnel was here to hire in the Shreveport-Bosier region and that we actually had the capacity to fill the jobs that this company Astere is going to need when it launches here. And not only to convince me, I wanted to be here, but to convince Steve, you know, who lives in Los Gatos before now relocating here. So, it's a very important program, and I'll keep this brief, but not unlike the program that I started with when I was in high school before I went to Louisiana Tech and before I got my masters, I'm sure the city council at that time that was helping the school board fund that program didn't think a lot of it, but it had a lot of repercussions through my life, my life in both technology and in music and in film. And I really want to ask for your continued support here of the EAP. It's a very important part of the ecosystem for starting new companies and high-paying jobs in Shreveport and the surrounding arclitex. So, once again, thank you very much. Be happy to take any questions if anybody has any, but by all means, don't feel like you need to ask any. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Again, thank you for this public-private partnership with the BRF. I think we've shown a lot of return on your investment for the community. We're going into year five on this, and I look forward to coming back next year and reporting to you on even more success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Any questions? Thank you. Chair, that concludes. The chair would like to recognize Councilman Everson at this time.
Oh, I was going to recognize Stacy Brown from the Convention and Tourism Bureau. For her presentation is, is there she is?
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Appreciate you allowing me to come before you today to give you an overview of our 2018 budget and talk to you a little bit about 2017. I'd like to say thank you to your appointee to our board, Africa Price. She has been a tremendous asset to our board, and we appreciate her service. The Bureau does produce a number of professional collateral pieces each year, but as you can tell, the one before you is not the finished product. It's still at the printer, so as soon as I get the completed budget with the business plan, I will get those to you. So, you just have the working draft there. The numbers are finalized, it's just not the final printed version. Well, in reviewing-
This works for me, by the way. I don't need the-
Okay.
It's got the information that we-
It's got all the information, just not as pretty. In looking at our performance over the last six months, we are on track to meet or exceed all of our goals for 2017. And to give you just a quick overview of our research, of visitors who came within the last year, nearly 55% of them visited three or more times, some as many as six times per year. 60% of them spent two or more times each time they, two or more nights each time they came. So, one of the things we learned is that a lot of our visitors are just looking for another reason to come back. So, part of what we need to do is communicate with them on a regular basis about the great things happening, such as the new Shreveport Aquarium, and our many events, and letting them know what's happening so they can come back. Also, one of the things we do with our major campaigns, of course Dallas and East Texas are our major markets, this year we worked with Expedia as one of our major channels in communicating. With Expedia, we're able to track those people who click on our ad, then they may go and look some other places, they come back, and if through Expedia they purchase their hotel room, their airline ticket, or their rental car, we know that they purchased it. We also know how much they spent. So, for those who clicked on our ad and then through Expedia purchased a hotel room in our market, we know that our return on investment is at least eight to one on the dollars we spent on those campaigns. We know it's actually better than that because, as you know, not everyone completes their buy through Expedia. They also go to Travelocity, to other sites to look, some of them are loyal Hilton members or others honors members, so they'll go and buy direct from their other channels, but they've seen it through our ad on Expedia and move forward with that purchase. So, one of the things our board did this year is say, you know, this campaign, we're very able to track, we know it's providing a great return on investment, we're going to put some more money into those campaigns next year to drive some more of those leisure visitors. Those are the visitors that we can reach and get in the shortest amount of time into our community. And with that, we've been able to make a turnaround in our economy. Because of these partnerships, we've also been successful in generating more in the group and meetings business. We work quite a bit with the Shreveport Convention Center and the Hilton, this is what we call our triad. We meet on a regular basis, work with their sales teams, do joint sales calls, not only with them, but with other hotels and meeting areas in the area, to really go out and market our area to bring in those conventions. So, we really would like to say a special thank you to the mayor and her team for bringing the Louisiana Municipal Convention home this year. That was definitely a big win, and we appreciate being a part of that this year. Well, the Bureau has really a true passion for driving tourism and creating economic impact for our community. We can tell that you really do too. You have done, made a major commitment to cleaning up the city, making sure the lights are on, and really making sure that people are welcomed in our community and feel safe. These are all things, of course, that local citizens want, but they're also what drives visitation. So, we appreciate all that you do to make that happen. As you have, the Bureau has experienced some challenges in 2017 and 2018. However, we've really been able to see that tide turn, and we are now headed in a private or very positive direction and focusing on those markets that are most lucrative to us. Sports marketing being one of those priorities. We appreciate your work in garnering that extra tax for the sports commission, and we have been very successful in landing a number of events through that and really magnifying that by adding to those. One example of that is the Hot Air Balloon Championships. So, that is actually a national competition that would come here for a number of days, would bring their competitors, but we said, you know what, this is an opportunity to bring in others as spectators for their competition. So, we added the event around that and have been very successful with that. That will be back in 2018. We did kind of that same thing with the Power Boat Nationals last year. Unfortunately, this year, due to some of the flooding and the bad weather, we were not able to host it this year. It will be back next year though, so we do have some of those events coming along. Also, back in February, we will have the LHSAA Wrestling Tournament. We're also working with the LHSAA on other events coming back to the Shreveport-Bosier area. Just because it hasn't been done before doesn't mean our staff doesn't do it. One of those areas is working on the culinary. We don't really have necessarily a famous chef from our area, but we've got fantastic restaurants and great culinary aptitude here. So, we've really worked with our restaurants to develop an Eat Here guide, encouraging people to eat local, but also to develop our restaurants and provide a Restaurant Week here in Shreveport-Bosier, to really get people out and about, not only out of towners, but our local people as well. This year, we hosted that during one of our major conventions so that we could encourage those conventioneers to get out and about as well, and that proved to be very successful, not only for those visitors and residents, but also for our restaurants. Through this product development, we've also been able to garner very strong partnerships with other cities for things like the Holiday Trail of Lights and the Boomer Bus Byway in generating visitation that goes Hudson Spokes from Shreveport-Bosier out into the other areas. Of course, the sports commission is a major part, and as you are looking, I'll point out just a couple of things. If you go to the page that has the five columns across, you'll see it has administrative, convention, tourism, sports, and communications. That sports department is what's budgeted within the Bureau's budget. Those funds are provided by the Bureau and provides all of the staffing and what it takes to bring those events to Shreveport-Bosier. So, the trade shows, the basic advertising, the travel. Once it's definitely coming to Shreveport-Bosier, then if you turn the next page down at the bottom, it's the Shreveport-Bosier Sports Commission Events. That is where that tax money goes into, and that goes to drive events here. One of our other commitments was not to just rest on our laurels and take those tax dollars, but to multiply those. We have hired a sports sponsorship person, and they have been able to pretty much double the amount of tax revenue with private sponsorship dollars. So, we've been able to secure a number of sporting events, and we're working to also build up right above that a reserve so that we can go after some large events for the future as well. Going back to the overall annual budget, we are actually projecting to come a little over our revenue projection and a little under our expenditure projection to end up the year very strong this year. Within the sports department, our sports commission, you have two appointees on that board, and they are Zazel Dudley and Patrick Wesley, and they do a tremendous job in representing the city and helping us to bring events to the area. SPAR has always been a great partner with those events in making them feel welcome and to provide great facilities. So, again, Mayor, President Fleury, or Councilman Fleury, appreciate all of y'all allowing me to come before you today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But most importantly, I'd like you to put December 1st on your calendars. That is our open house. It's from 11 to 2. It's come and go, and you definitely want to check it out, see more of what's happening at the visitor center, but also to have some great food.
Councilman Jenkins.
Quick question on your ROI on the Expedia. Now, is that ROI in terms of total, I'll call it hotel rooms, whatever, tickets purchased, or just a portion that generates the tax revenue from that purchase of?
That is the revenue generated through the hotels purchased from Expedia. So, it does not count the ones if they saw our ad and went and purchased it directly from the Hilton, it does not count that revenue, just the revenue generated from-
Right, but if you invest, let's say you have a monthly Expedia campaign, right? Somebody goes on Expedia, clicks, from Expedia clicks on a Shreveport hotel, and that hotel is $100, that's a one-to-one ROI the way you're doing it, right? Not whatever a point fee or whatever the hotel motel-
Right, so it's on their spend.
Okay.
Yes, not just the tax dollars, it's on their spend.
ROI of your invested dollars relative to the return on your invested-
Right.
Okay, that's what I was-
And return on investment to the community.
Okay. And then, on the hotel motel tax, where does it come in for the sports commission on your revenue side? So, that doesn't, that goes into one pool, and then you divide that part between reserve and part between events?
So, it goes into that bottom one that says Sports Commission Events. Then that board has said, we would like to set aside 35% of those, so each month, as that comes in, 35% is set aside into the reserve account.
And the reason that our revenues minus expenses aren't 75% or whatever, 65% is because that the program didn't start all the way through the middle of that year or something?
You're talking about the reserve fund? Right, well, there were some expenditures from the prior year that ended up coming in late.
Okay, and we've never spent anything out of the reserves yet?
Right, that is a new account.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished gifts? Mayor Tyler, we recognize you.
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman. Nothing today, thank you.
Under reports, anyone have any questions concerning or concerns relative to property standards? Say nothing, Mr. Green. Thank you very kindly. Revenue collection tomorrow?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we've already sent that in, as well as the attorney has sent in the sheriff bond, I believe.
Okay. All right. And will the finance have a budget, actual financial report on the second meeting?
Second meeting.
Just reminding you of that.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, public hearing comes to order now on the 2018 proposed budget.
Mr. Chairman, that's tomorrow.
I'm sorry. Tomorrow. Tomorrow. Okay. And Mr. Crawford, will there be any legislation to be added tomorrow?
I believe the clerk has a piece of legislation that's being added.
We have one ordinance, 142 and ordinance to amend Chapter 102, Vehicles For Hire, Article 38, Upgrading Regulations, Section 102-88 of the Code, Relative To Transportation Network Companies. So, that can be added to the agenda tomorrow.
All right.
And Fred, we have to have unanimous vote to add it to the agenda if I'm not mistaken.
Of all presidents.
Of all presidents. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay. How far we can do with this 142 ordinance? Are we going to discuss it?
I'm sorry.
142?
Yes.
Next, are we going to discuss that? Does someone want to read that?
That's to be added tomorrow.
Be added tomorrow? Okay, it's on my sheet.
All right, it will attempt it to be added tomorrow.
It will attempt to be added, okay. I don't have any public speak comments? That's the end, I think. I told him already. None, no public comments at this time. We have no executive appointments to be considered tomorrow. There are no items under consent agenda for our conduction, Mr. Crawford. Let's continue to items to be adopted.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's one person to speak on one of the items that's on the agenda.
I'm sorry, we didn't see it up here.
Did you bring it?
That's going to be at the end. Oh, it is on the item.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed, possible, Thomas Sweeney, would you like to come forward at this time and state your name and address? And you have three minutes, sir.
Apostle Thomas Sweeney, address 2306 Lakeshore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71103. I'm the president of the organization, which is National Association for the Advancement of God's People. I came here today, and this is to speak to the African-Americans that's on this board here in this city about, you're talking about dismissing Chief Crump because you're saying he's not doing his job, people are held hostage in their homes since this man has been in office. These people have been held hostage in their homes, Willie Bradford- These people have been held hostage in their homes, Willie Bradford and Bowman, since we dropped the skilled trades at Bogota T. and put these young black kids out here as violent criminals. This is our responsibility. This was something that our generation created. I told y'all in 1998, you put them skilled trades back in these schools, get these kids a skill, and they will not have to be out there violent. They will be educated and with a skill. And we, as a people, as a race, have to provide the technical jobs. That gentleman stood right here and told y'all, he went to Bogota T. and took up that computer science. Look at where he is now. Look at where the guys, the people that graduated with y'all, Willie Bradford and me, where they are today. This is not his fault. The law started this along with E.V. and Dr. Drake. And as far as what's going on in the black community, that is our responsibility. When we marched in this city against Dar-Tar, we got what we wanted, separate but equal, but you didn't know what to do with it. These people with these degrees, did you buy them or did they give them to you? Because as far as economic and community development, what do we own? Nothing. When Enron closed, we should have bought it. When Wellcome closed, we should have bought it. When General Motors closed, we should have bought it. What part of the American health care do we have? Our help in this country, our help in anything. 95% of the penitentiary population is black. Why? Because we put them out there, our generation, these are our children, it's not these white folk's children. This is our responsibility. And Chief Crump didn't put them out there. Yes, the law had a major part in doing it by going up in your house, telling y'all you couldn't raise your children, you couldn't spank them. But that's our fault, Willie Bradford. That's our fault, our generation. Now you up here trying to blame this man for this problem? No. And Ms. Tyler, I say to you in the name of the Father, the Son, and Rapt in the Holy Spirit, I hope you don't release this man behind his crap. That's not his responsibility. You, Willie Bradford, Gregory Tarver, Alphonse Jackson, that's how we did this. Don't blame that man. You dudes get up off of y'all behind and do your job in that cattle commission. I'm putting y'all on notice, just like I did the school board. Within the next three months, this organization is going to file under the First Amendment right petition to government for redress of grievances. And y'all are going to be the ones all the way from Washington down here.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Crawford, let's continue.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, consent agenda legislation, adopted ordinance, Resolutions, Resolution 184, suspending certain provisions of Chapter 10 and any applicable provisions of the Shreveport Unified Development Code of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances Relative to Sale Dispensing and Consumption of Alcohol at the Holiday in Dixie Parade. Resolution 185 authorizes Jeffrey David Poe and Brandy Kinch Poe at 10,700 L.B. Road to make connection to the City of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system. And Resolution 186 is a resolution to recognize and congratulate.
Janay?
Janay, messed that again. Janay Williams for being selected to participate in the 2018 High School Honors Performance Series at Carnegie Hall.
So any questions?
There is. It's really directed, Jackie, so on the parade times and whatever, I believe you spoke to Ms. Davis today, correct?
I did, and there's going to be a change to be.
So we're going to put some kind of amendment in there?
It should be updated.
Okay, no worries. So long as it's up there tomorrow. I was really a little confused on my end this morning, so I tried to, instead of inserting myself in the middle of it, I just had her call you. Okay, thank you.
They going to have the parade?
They're going to have the parade.
I'm a confused now. Oh, they going to have the parade?
They're going to have the parade, and there will be an amendment for Resolution 184. Modifying hours request.
We don't think it's going to be an amendment. We're just going to put a new resolution in there because it won't be introduced or acted on until tomorrow. But it should have exactly what she wants, and we'll get with her on it.
So it won't be an amendment?
Apparently not. It'll just be a new cap.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Resolutions on second reading and final passage or require only one reading. Resolution 177 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 and any applicable provision of the Shreveport Unified Development Code of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances Relative to Sale Dispensing and Consumption of Alcohol and Beverages for Maryland's Place for a Mardi Gras Celebration February the 9th, 2018 through February the 11th, 2018. Resolution 182 authorized the Mary executed cooperative purchase agreement between the City of Shreveport, Louisiana and the Regional Aid Education Services Center for the purposes of allowing the city to have the option to make purchases when it is in the best interest of the city from the Inter-Local Purchasing System, TIPS program. Resolution 187 requesting the Metropolitan Planning Commission through its executive director to provide a list of all properties downzoned with the adoption of the Shreveport Unified Development Code. Resolution 188 authorized the Mary to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Shreveport and North Louisiana Health Coalition, N.L.H.C., for the purposes of voluntary agreeing to assist in the implementation of the plans of the N.L.H.C. to optimize and sustain the health and productivity of communities in Louisiana. Resolution 189 is a resolution ordering the call for a special election to be held in the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, for the purposes of submitting to the qualified voters of the city propositions to authorize the continuation levy and collection of special ad valorem taxes therein, and also authorize the city to continue to levy and collect a special ad valorem tax for the continuation and maintenance of a Police Three Platoon system originally authorized by Article 14, Section 12 of the Louisiana Constitution of 1921, making application to the State Bond Commission in connection therewith. And Resolution 191 expresses confidence in the police department, no confidence in the chief of police, and to request the mayor to take the steps necessary to appoint a new chief of police.
Chair recognized, Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Mr. Jim, my remarks is going to be limited, but I really would like to speak and make a couple of expressions regarding Resolution 191. The fundamental responsibility of government is to provide a safe environment for our citizens. We cannot have a viable city, we cannot have a viable country if we do not have safe communities where our citizens feel like they are not being held hostage in their own homes. My resolution, Mr. Chairman, is either personal, not politically motivated, to speak for itself. Every morning, if not in your districts, I'm going to use my district as an example. Residents wake up, and they hope that they can leave their homes and come back and find it has not been burglarized. They wake up in the morning, Mr. Chairman, and they hope that a citizen nor business will be robbed that day. They wake up in the morning, and they hope that a citizen of this city will not be shot or killed that day. They wake up every morning hoping that something will be done about this wild, wild west violent culture that seems to be escalating in this city. I have the highest respect for our Shreveport Police Department. I have attended the Citizens Police Academy. I have rode the streets of Shreveport. I have engaged the police department as the president of the Queensport Neighborhood Association and other organizations, which I have been a part of over the last 30 years. I believe in the police department, but I also, Mr. Chairman, believe in leadership. And in this, at this time in our history in Shreveport, with what I'm seeing, my council colleagues may not see it, but what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing back from the citizens, hope is not enough. Hoping that things will change is not enough. Mr. Chairman, I submit that it's time that some real meaningful plans and strategies or programs that will be effective in reducing the crime rates that we're experiencing in the city of Shreveport needs to take place. It appears that the current leadership is not providing that. It's not giving us those necessary tools that will deter and eradicate the criminal element out of Shreveport. The gentleman, I agree with him somewhat, but at the same time, it's the responsibility of this body. The seat of Shreveport government is in session. We cannot afford, we should not be fearful of speaking on things that are relevant to the success and to the benefit of this city. Whether or not you agree or not, we have the responsibility to look at every opportunity, every option we have to make this city safer and better. My resolution speaks for itself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Crawford?
Resolution 189 is on the agenda to be adopted tomorrow. However, cannot be adopted before December the 22nd, so we'll be asking for an amendment, I mean, for a motion to postpone or disable until that time.
189?
Yes, 189.
Any questions on that? Councilmember?
I really got it.
Everybody got it. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Introduction of Resolutions. Mr. Chairman, Resolution 190 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Shreveport and Carr Riggs and Ingram LLC for the purposes of an external audit of the city for fiscal year January the 1st, 2017 through December 31st of 2017.
Do I say, have any questions?
Okay. Introduction of Resolutions not to be adopted prior to November 28th, 2017. Ordinance 138 amends the 2017 capital improvements budget. This is money, $56,790 that has been accumulated by Sportran through the auction of end-of-life buses. It will be used to facilitate the completion of the restrooms and the community police office and the bus operations break room at the Southwest Transfer Hub. Ordinance number 139 amends section in Chapter 14, Animals and Fowl of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances Relative to Implementation of the Trap Neuter Return, TNR Program. Ordinance 140 is case number C-103-17, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of St. Vincent and Oakley Drive, Shreveport, Catopir, Louisiana, from R17, Single Family Residential District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And then ordinance 141, case number C-104-17, amends the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the west side of Lynnwood Avenue, 240 feet south of McCary Street, Shreveport, Catopir, Louisiana, from C3, General Commercial District to C4, Heavy Commercial District.
Any questions?
I do have one, just procedurally. When I see these case numbers, and this is really for MPC.
Correct.
When I see the case numbers that we're talking about, and there's eight or nine down below, if they don't have an MPC kind of summary of what happened at the meeting, then I am to assume that these are revisions of the map that were clerical or administrative in nature that's just being updated?
Most of them are.
I know most of them are, but I'm just, so that how I know whether they're ones that have gone through the full, you know, while call it the normal course of business at the MPC specifically?
Well, each case, when assigned a number, will always have a staff report attached to it. So if there's one missing, then that's a clerical error. That's not, because every case, regardless of whether it's being initiated by the MPC or being initiated by the applicant, will require a staff report that tells you exactly what the MPC Board did in response to that case as a recommendation. So if there's something missing there, that's probably just something that was not intended.
Okay.
So if you ever get a zoning case and it doesn't have a staff report with it, something's wrong. Something's missing.
By virtue, unless it tells me something in this stuff that says specifically, because when we used to get staff reports, we would get them in the MPC of, I'm going to say, the MPC agenda.
Right.
And it would pull out from that, here's a staff deal like.
Right.
But I guess maybe what you're saying in our new system, we're not doing it that way anymore.
That's correct.
And now we're doing this, I'll call it a staff report on letterhead specific for each case.
That's correct.
So I would need to read through that to know which ones were just administrative changes from the first map to the second, from those that have had a hearing specifically.
And I can always identify those for you if need be.
Okay. I mean, to be honest with you, it'd be nice to know before going through it if it's just an administrative update, just for the obvious reasons.
You can change? Well, actually, in the report, in the report, it already tells you whether or not that's what's happening. Actually, in the first paragraph of each report, it will tell you what's actually, why this is occurring, and what the steps are being taken for that particular case.
If you click on the 103, for instance, 140.
I'm on it.
Okay, right. And that's, that one is just, that's not a change, that is actually an application, this may have been applied.
If you scroll down, right below the ordinance, you'll see the staff report.
Right.
Right before the, before the what?
You see the ordinance. Do you see where you click on the ordinance? And if you just scroll down.
And it says here, the applicant is requesting a rezon. Yeah, all applicants request rezones. What was you saying? I'm saying that if you go on further, go ahead, Art, go ahead and finish what you were saying.
No, I was asking Mr. Jenkins if he saw the staff report right under that.
I think he's reading it. I mean, I'm reading it, but see, on this one, it says the MPC Board voted 9 to 0 to recommend, but I'm not convinced that it's not going to say that regardless whether it's administrative or not.
Okay, so when you look at the staff report and you look in the first paragraph of the report, it will actually tell you the situation that you're dealing with, okay? And remember, none of these are done administratively. They're all, all of them have to go through the public hearing process. They're all processed by the same process or procedure.
Okay, so let me say it in a little bit more. So I'm going to try to be, not to be rude, but the ones that were screwed up, I'm going to use that term, i.e. we put them on a map one way, and then we realized that they should have been put on a map differently.
My understanding of this one, Oliver, is, and this is.
And I'm not saying this one.
Just specific to that, though?
That one did go through.
I don't think it was one of those screw-ups in that instance. I think it was a much longer-lasting screw-up in that that particular property had always been operated as a commercial property but had never had the correct zoning. Yeah, I don't think it ever had the correct zoning in the past. I could be wrong, but that's what I remember it to be. So I did get a call about this from a constituent, and after I looked into it a little bit and relayed the information, my constituent felt better about it, but it is, and I went and looked at the site, and it's, I mean, it's clearly a commercial structure and all this has been, but it never just, never was owned as one.
And so what I was trying to just say for like, is there a way that I can just look at this and then say, hey, whether it's an administrative oversight via the map or an administrative oversight by the timing, because this one in particular, I'm like, why are we, I mean, do people have to go lobby and sit up there? And I just didn't know if there is a way to know that ahead of time before I go through and find out.
In the staff report in this one, at least, there's an application, because this is in response to somebody wanting to operate there. Yeah, so somebody is making an application to use the building, and so that's what triggered this. And it has been vacant for a long.
That's true.
I don't know how long, but I know certainly as long as I've been familiar with the property, it's been vacant.
And it operated as a business as the years passed, but no one ever got a certificate of occupancy, so there's no track record there. But the way the design of the building is it's facing the street and not toward the neighborhood.
It's like an old corner store in sort of Caddo Heights area, that's an area near the cemetery there, and, you know, it was, looks like it was built in the. the cemetery there, and, you know, it was, looks like it was built in the 50s, and it was, you know, just a little corner store. And it's been empty for a long time, and they wanted to open it as like a retail store, like a little clothes store.
But I can, what I can do, Councilman Jenkins, is in the staff report, I can bold or highlight these phrases that will flag it for you, so that when you see those coming forward, you'll be able to see that almost immediately, that it is a situation, it's a corrective action. Would that help?
That, I mean, that might, because when I read the description of even this one that's gone from natural area to heavy industrial, right? I recollect that one was a, I'll call it-
Corrective action.
Corrective action.
Yes, yes.
Other than my technical term that I use. Okay, but see, I read, "The applicant is requesting approval," and then it goes through this story about it was originally zoned heavy industrial, was later changed to natural area as a result of the zoning map. So, it was done by this, but I'm trying to understand if that person actually, you know, had to come and go through a full hearing, or if you just set up, you're right, we made a mistake, and now we're putting it back through.
And even when, even when it's a mistake like that, and let's say that we actually initiate the application on behalf of the applicant, we still go through the public hearing process, just like we do any other case, because by state law, we have to do that. It's just that it doesn't cost them anything. They don't have to spend any money. We do the processing, and it's done.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right.
Yes, if there is a possible way to just do it on the very front end when we click on it.
I'll be, we'll be more than willing to flag it for you that way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ordinances on second reading and final passage is, ordinance 125 amends the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2017 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund Budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. Ordinance 126 amends the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2017 Capital Improvements Budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. This is $120,000 to finish up runway 32 at the airport, and that's, funds are provided by L A D O T D. Ordinance 127 amends the 2017 Capital Improvements Budget. This is $46,825,000 for various water and sewer projects related to the consent decree. Ordinance 128, making certain technical amendments relating to the junior lien bonds and set forth in ordinance number 53 of 2017 by amending the 2017 D bonds to senior lien and junior liens and ratifying the final terms of the bonds issued pursuant to ordinance. Ordinance 137, authorizing the mayor and Shreveport Transit Management, Inc. to execute lease agreements with various food truck vendors on an interchangeable basis at the Shreveport, I'm sorry, the Sportran intermodal terminal and otherwise provided with respect thereto. Ordinance 89A is a zoning case 72-17, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of Ellery Road and Gulf Ridge Drive, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from R-3 residential estate zoning district to C-1 neighborhood commercial zoning district. Ordinance 129, zoning case C-87-17 is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Fourth Street and Market Street, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from I MU Industrial Mixed Use District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance 130, zoning case C-88-17 is an ordinance to amend the zoning, official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east, east of Clyton Parkway bounded by Cross Bayou and the Red River, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from N A Natural Areas District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance 131 is case number C-79-17 is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side, Clyton Parkway at Jack Wales Boulevard and the Red River, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from N A Natural Areas District to I-1 Light Industrial District. Zoning case C-90-17 is ordinance 132. This is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Pines Road, 731 feet south of Yarborough Road, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from R-112, single-family residential district to C-1 neighborhood commercial district. Ordinance 133 is zoning case number C-91-17 is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Avalon Drive, 165 feet south of Hoyt Drive, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from R-17, single-family residential district to C-1 neighborhood commercial district. Ordinance number 134, zoning case number C-92-17. This is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the west side of Mansfield Road, north and south of New Moon Drive, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from R-MH P Residential Manufactured Home Park District to C-3 General Commercial District. Ordinance 135 is zoning case C-93-17. This is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property on the north side of Almarl, Almarl Drive, 301 feet east of Line Avenue, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from R-15, single-family residential district to C-1 neighborhood commercial district. And finally, ordinance 136, zoning case number C-94-17 is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the south side of Rutherford Street, 86 feet east of Oak Street, Shreveport, Catupirish, Louisiana, from C-2 Corridor Commercial District to R-2 Multi-Family Residential District. That's a lot of zoning.
That's my point. I was trying to figure which ones-
I'm with you.
Okay, we'll, Mr. Thompson? I don't see anyone on the board, so is there any table legislation to be moved, table tomorrow?
Not that we're aware of.
I know, no, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I did want to mention that on ordinance 89A, we've asked, been asked by a number of people that there is an amendment. The amendment is a little hard to see, but it is there, and we will be asking to run that amendment tomorrow.
That first Gulf Court, drive, address it back here.
Where, now, where's that?
89A, zoning case number 72-17 is the first ordinance regarding zoning under ordinances on second reading.
89A?
Yes, ma'am, 89A.
Oh, yes.
All right. Let's go to, we're going to appeals.
Public Affairs and Appeals. Mr. Chairman, we do have one. Mr. Green will take us to that road.
This is Nicholson today?
Nicholson.
Yes. Good afternoon. Our case today is 1809 Nicholson Street. We started the structure, I think, a month and a half ago. Since then, the owner has scraped and primed the structure. He has replaced the rotted wood that was on the back, well, the burnt wood that was on the back, the end pieces. He has secured the structure all the way around. The electrical service is now active. He does have electric. The vent on the front has been replaced, and he is asking for 60 days to finish the roof.
Give you another shot of that.
And also paint the exterior of the structure.
I'm gonna move for a 60-day extension for him. He has gotten a lot of work done on this unit. I know it's kind of at a point where, you know, once you scrape it, it doesn't necessarily look better, you know, but he's done a lot of work on it and is making good progress, so I'd like to give him a little time.
Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Bradford. Any discussion? Would you please vote? That concludes your part of the appeals. Is there no ABO appeals, or no MPC appeals? Are there any reports at this time from committees, board members, or officers of those committees? Mr. Thompson, that brings us to the clerk's report, and Councilman Jenkins has requested that I ask you to add this to the clerk's report. It's troubling up here to the council members that our timepiece on the wall back there is incorrect. Could you please look into that and see if you can solve that?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll get us a ladder, and we'll get up there and see if we can change.
Oh, you can get some ladder. That's what we're asking. There's nothing else before the council this time? Councilman Bradford?
You go live for discommisses, I trust.
Not on Monday. Not on Monday, we don't. I'm going by the sheet here, 'cause I just, I can read, but. You want me to comment?
No, I could, I could, I could wait till tomorrow.
Is there objection?
No, we can't.
Councilmember can speak at any point.
Is there additional discussion that needs to happen or anything?
No, no, I was, I was gonna-
I try to run a tight railroad. You guys give him back out.
But I never, I didn't know we could not make a discommisses on Monday.
No, you go right ahead, Congressman.
No, but I was gonna, I was gonna, I was, I was gonna commend the mayor and the council members for the budget session this week. I thought they was, it was very healthy, healthy the time that I was there. I had to leave a little bit on Saturday, but I thought that the budget was a very tight budget. I personally don't see a whole lot that may need changing in the sense of the budget, but I wanted to ask, Mr. Clerk, in regards to amendments, how can we move forward in submitting amendments before when?
Well, as soon as you decide what you want to do, just let us know, and we will either prepare them or you have to do it.
Jackie's enthusiastic nods look like she means the sooner the better.
Lightning speed.
So that she can start working on whatever she needs to work on.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll do that. And so, I just wanted, I just wanted to, because I do have a couple that I want to submit, and so that we can get those out. In regards to, and I guess we'll discuss it tomorrow, we talked about expediting our next meeting to not conflict with the holidays. Is that still, is that still?
December the 22nd, I believe.
That I understand. We would approve it tomorrow, have we already approved it?
We've already done it.
Okay.
It's in the books.
It's in the books.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, while we're talking, I think everybody knows it, but Councilwoman Lynch will not be here tomorrow either. She broke her ankle, and I've heard that she may have to have surgery on Wednesday, so she won't be here. But she said she would call, she would let me know what her instructions were.
Send her wishes for a faster recovery.
She's still able to email.
Enough. I was telling you.
She break her feet.
I ain't gonna say that. Mr. Chairman, let me acknowledge distinguished commissioner. We actually share quite a bit of territory in our collective districts. Commissioner London Johnson, good to see you, Commissioner.
Glad you're here.
So, so nice.
Any other comments? Chair.